We're going to get started. Welcome, everybody, to the twice monthly meeting of the mayor and council of the city of Westminster. If you have an electronic device, please silence it for the duration of the meeting at our courtesy to others. We will start the meeting as we always do with a pledge to the flag and a moment of silence.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll get right to it. We have two items for approval on the minutes. The first is the mayor and council meeting of May 14th, 2018, and the second is the executive session of May 14th, 2018.
And make a motion to approve the minutes?
Well, I guess I'd better second it, shouldn't I?
I certainly hope so.
Have a motion and a second. Any corrections, amendments, deletions? All right, here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes approved. Next is a public hearing in the city of Westminster. Public hearings are administered by the mayor. Mr. Mayor, the gavel is yours.
Begin public hearing ordinance number 895, an ordinance regarding local zoning map amendment number LNA 18-01, approving an application for the establishment of medical cannabis overlay district upon certain property located in the city's B business zone and adopting the accompanying written decision. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing you're about to hear is regarding the cannabis dispensary proposed for location at 330 140 Village Road. On October 26th, 2013, the mayor and council passed and approved ordinance 859, which created a process for the review and approval of medical cannabis uses in the city of Westminster. This includes the standards for licensed dispensary premises, with the exception of the packaging attached for reference. If approved, the city would only apply this medical cannabis use zone to the tenant spaces Unit 7 and Unit 8 for the specific proposed dispensary in this application. Any other medical cannabis proposal would require a separate application. On April 12th, 2018, your planning zoning commission held a public hearing to receive public comments and a presentation by the petitioner. The commission voted to leave the public record open for 20 days to receive additional comments. On April 27th, the commission did receive a letter from Stephanie Brophy of the Lady Curtis Beach LLP, an updated draft for presentation and security measures, which are the only additional materials that we're going to see. On May 10th, the commission deliberated and voted to approve the petition as submitted. The public record has been submitted for your review in your practice. I just want to note that as part of the process required for closing the zone, the mayor and common council could choose to grant additional approval of the zone for a dispensary dependent on the petitioner's successful licensure by the state for this particular facility. Your planning zoning commission has recommended approval. The commission's report and recommendation is attached. Staff recommends that the mayor and common council hold a public hearing tonight, then vote to continue the hearing on July 9th at 6:00 PM Central. I'm certain you're here to answer any questions at this time and also when the ordinance related to it is completed. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. The members of the council have any questions for Mr. Mackey? Okay. We're going to open this up for public comment, and we have -- two people have signed the public comment list. When you make your comment, please state your name and your address before speaking. And first up is Deborah...
Fajal.
Fajal. Please stand, say your name and your address.
Good afternoon, I'm Deborah Fajal. I live in 347 Kirk Avenue. As I stated before in my last public hearing also, I am not opposed to the medical cannabis, but I am opposed to the location. I do not believe that it is secure, even though they said that they follow -- will follow strict measures of security, there's always the possibility. The location is not good for that. Also, I do believe that if said and approved, it's a matter of time when marijuana can be legalized in the future, and good for thought will be that the first places that could be accepted to sell it later on will also be the ones that have already been certified and approved for medical marijuana. That is also one reason, another reason that I strongly oppose to that location. It should be a better place, in a place that it could be for medical attentions for doctors and everything, buildings that are safer. There is a building also in the corner of, when you enter 97, there's medical facilities everywhere there, but it should be placed on a location like that. I, like I said, I don't agree with that. I know that it would be beneficial for several people because they're sick and they're needing it, but that is not the location to put it. The only thing that I disagree upon, I mentioned my statement in the past, and I understand it and I agree upon doing it, but it's not a service for the community, it's a service for the people that are sick and are needing it. And people that are sick go to doctors, hospitals, and medical buildings and locations, and that's where it should be, on a safer place, secure, and surrounding, you know, surrounded by medical doctors and everywhere else. It should be approved. So, nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Again, please state your name and your address before speaking. Luis Capin? Okay. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment? Will we close comments?
Leave it open.
Oh, yeah, we're going to leave it open. We're leaving it open until the next meeting. Any council members?
I'm sorry, we had anticipated making a small presentation. I'm here on behalf of actually my band LLC, the applicant, and if we have an opportunity right now, it probably won't be more than, you know, 15 minutes.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, Stephanie Brophy of the Lady Curtis Beach on behalf of my band LLC, the applicant, and with me is Ron Bond of my band LLC. So, we're here, as Mr. Mackey stated, requesting that the mayor and council vote to adopt an ordinance applying the medical cannabis overlay district to 330 140 Village Road, Units 7 and 8. It's the shopping center where the actual place for a muscle line gym used to be in a Blue Bistro, and okay, so we know where it is. And as this body knows, the purpose of the medical cannabis overlay district is to implement state law with regards to the location of the facility for the processing, growing, and dispensing of medical cannabis to qualified patients who are legally entitled to have it available, and obviously to do so in a manner that we have the appropriate restrictions and conditions in place that the zoning is what it should be and the potential adverse consequences to the neighborhoods and the businesses are minimized. Here, the mayor and common council has already designated this area as within the district, so it's presumptively appropriate. To that end, I think it is important to have Mr. Bond, who knows far more about it than his attorney, answer a few questions about the facility, the process, and the security. If we could walk through some of that, because we do hear in the public, I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, but I do hear you, but the measures in the state of Maryland are so high that security restrictions on these facilities that there seems to be much less of a risk of any sort of, sort of, that any in-house inventory would somehow become subject to theft or anything of that sort. So, Mr. Bond, what is your relationship to my band LLC?
I'm one of the co-founders.
Okay, and did you apply for a medical cannabis dispensary license from the state of Maryland?
Yes.
And would my band LLC approve for a pre-approval license?
Yes, my band LLC receives stage one.
Okay, and were you required to undergo criminal background investigation?
Yes.
And were you required to undergo financial disclosures?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the role of a dispensary agent at a medical cannabis dispenser?
The dispensary agent is the one who actually handles the product and provides it to a qualified patient.
And are those dispensary agents subject to a full background check and drug screening?
Yes.
Okay, and are they, does the state of Maryland require that they receive substantial training in handling of medical cannabis?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to show you, and I'm going to give each of you a copy. This is a floor plan, and I think it's helpful because the floor plans actually show the amount of security cameras. This is all required by the state. I would love to say that this is 100% voluntary by my client, I'm sure they would anyway, but this is, the state requirements are very, very strict for these facilities, and I can get it apart.
Thank you.
And I will show you one here, so you can hang on to that. So, can you describe the overall construction of the premises with regards to the additional measures that are placed here to prevent unauthorized entry?
Yes, so, just to give you guys a little bit of an overview, the facility has to be divided into a public zone and a private zone. The public zone is open to the public, that's designated in yellow. The blue is the service area, that area is restricted by key cards, and you have to log everyone that goes in and out. Only employees or registered dispensary agents and employees and qualified patients are allowed into that blue area. And then behind that, there's the green area, and no member of the public is allowed in there unless escorted by a registered dispensary agent. So, the only people who go back in there, just where all the product is stored, are the actual employees of the facility. In addition, as far as security requirements, we have to have two entirely separate security systems, one for the building itself and then one for the secure room and packaging area. They can't even, they can't share power, they can't share cameras, they can't share storage, everything has to be totally distinct.
Will you describe the doors to the secure room?
Okay, so, actually, let's start with the secure room. Secure room has to be constructed of reinforced concrete on all four sides, ceiling. It has to have no doors and badge locks and the whole line to secure that area, and all of the product has to be stored in that room except for an hour before we open, while we're open, and an hour after we close. We hack everything up every day and stick it into that secure area.
Okay. And will you describe the security system that you're required to have in place?
Briefly, it's, so, it's two separate systems, one for the public and service area and then one for the green secure areas. It has to be 100% camera coverage throughout the entire thing. All the recordings have to be stored off-site with timestamps, and there's a lot of security requirements around that. And also, in the event when, if we discover that maybe some product is diverted, or if we have a break-in or something like that, we're required to disclose that to Maryland State Police within 24 hours.
And you talked about there being a public area and then a service area?
Yes.
Who has access to the service area?
The service area, normally it is only employees, members of the public who are coming in to receive products, they have to check in into the waiting area, and then they have to be escorted into the service area by them.
And those people who come in and represent that they are a qualified patient entitled to receive medical cannabis, what do they have to show you?
There are, they can request an ID card, but that's not required because we have to have a real-time connection back to the medical cannabis commission to verify every patient every time they come in, that they are currently in good standing with the commission.
So, the state of Maryland actually is tied into your system, so any person who walks through there, it's said to the state of Maryland?
Yes, as well as every, any sort of product that comes in has to be logged with the state, and any sort of product that goes out the door has to be logged into the state.
Okay, and on this floor plan layout, I see a number of video cameras, so will there be 24-hour surveillance?
Yes, 24-hour surveillance.
Okay, and where will the records of these images be kept?
There will be one copy stored locally and then another copy stored off-site.
Okay. And, so you talked about security. When you are having products shipped in or delivered, speak specifically to this site, right? You have it delivered, how will you keep it secure?
Well, before the product even leaves the processor or the grower, they have to send us an electronic manifest with the contents of what they will be delivering to us, and basically, we have an entrance directly into the secure area from the rear of the building, so it has to take loading and unloading through there, which will, can only be done by qualified employees or the employee of the lower swing processor, which is also called a...
Approximately how many employees, when this business is up and running, do you anticipate having?
On a daily basis, it depends on the number of patients. At the moment, we're planning on each 10.
And so, just remind me, who will actually handle the medical cannabis product?
They have to be what's known as a registered dispensary agent, so they undergo a criminal background check with the state, they are certified by the state, and they are the only ones that are allowed to be in any of the secure areas of the facility, and any patient that comes in is escorted on a one basis by one of these dispensary agents.
Are qualified patients, they're entitled to use medical cannabis, can they use it in the facility?
Absolutely not. No products we've assumed are allowed in.
Where is the only place that a qualified patient is legally allowed to use the product?
In their home.
Okay. How will you handle the receipt, receive, storage, packaging, and labeling? You receive a delivery of medical cannabis at this location, what will occur once it goes into your facility?
We have to verify every item that matches with the electronic manifest, at which point we provide a real-time update to the state that says, yes, we have received the contents of this. If there's any discrepancy, we send the whole thing back and they have to start all over.
Have you yourself visited other medical cannabis dispensaries currently operating in Maryland?
Yes, I have.
And can you describe what their operations are like?
Generally, they are similar to what we're doing here. You come in, there's a waiting area, some are very expensive and sell like a variety of products, some are very sparse and it's basically a closet-sized waiting room. You come in, you check in with the receptionist, you provide your identification, and then an agent comes out of the secure area, of course, you enter the secure area of the product's dispens. You work with them, you get whatever you need, everything is packaged in, you know, very clean packaging, and it goes out the door safely.
And in your interactions with the people, the other medical cannabis dispensaries, have they indicated that there has been any issues with public, or public people who are not qualified patients coming in and attempting to obtain medical cannabis?
No, I've not heard of anything like that.
Okay. And currently, what stage are you at with the state of Maryland?
Currently, we have received what's known as stage one approval, which means we had to fill out this 140-page application, basically describing exactly how we're going to run the operation and structure our business. Based on that, they gave us the stage one approval, which means that we can now go and build what we said we were going to build in our application. So, once this is approved, then we will have to go through construction for the site, and then this site will actually be physically inspected by the medical cannabis commission, at which point, assuming we pass muster, they will grant us what's known as stage two approval, and then we'll be able to be open for business.
How do you confirm that a prescription is valid? Somebody could be a qualified patient and then swore the prescription. How do you confirm it?
No, because the prescriptions are also registered with the state. The doctors have to be registered, the patients have to be registered, and if a doctor has certified that patient, then that is on file with the city of Maryland, but again, we check in real-time when the patient comes through the door.
Okay, and does this facility have public water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay. You are familiar with the extensive regulations concerning medical cannabis, and you've spoken about many of them today. Will you comply with all select rules and regulations concerning a medical cannabis dispensary?
Yes, absolutely.
And will you conspicuously display your medical cannabis dispensary license?
Yes, absolutely.
Assuming that you are, assuming the mayor and common council votes to approve the adoption of an ordinance applying the medical cannabis overlay district to this facility, approximately when would you anticipate actually being open for business?
We are anticipating about 60 days for construction after approval. If that happens tonight, that's the end of August, early September.
And are you intending on using very basic nondescript signage?
Yes, absolutely. Most of the other ones I've been to have been very...
And are they in a variety of locations?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I would open it up for some questions, and I would do a short closing if you don't have any questions.
Mr. President, I've got, or actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you run the hearings, a couple of questions. So, first, I don't think we're going to give an approval tonight or take a vote on it because you didn't have enough time on the notifications, so I believe we have to move this to our subsequent meeting. You mentioned if you get approval tonight, I don't believe that's going to happen. Am I right, Ms. Levin?
Yes, there was a question of the length of the closing of the signage, that you know about, but the applicant...
You're aware of that?
We are aware. I was just stating in general so that I didn't have to do this again for you, then I'm not saying anything.
Well, I was more responding to the...
I figured one shot you would have remembered that, okay.
We just have to leave public comment open until the next meeting.
Right.
So, and are you aware that we've already been through this once?
Yes.
We've already given one approval. So, I guess there's enough business here for two of you to operate within the city, I think. One question, you mentioned that they don't have to have an ID card, which I was under the impression they did, in order to be able to dispense the product. So, how are you going to identify them if they're not going to have an ID card?
If they don't have an ID card, they have to provide a state ID, driver's license or something like that, at which point we can check in real-time with the cannabis commission.
So, you do, that was not mentioned in your question and answer period, so you do intend to check some form of identification?
Yes, absolutely, we're required to. And the reason is because of the cards, the state charges $50 for them, so they don't make people buy them.
I was not aware of that, I thought they had to have them. Okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? The red perimeter on the secure area, the green secure area, is that also a reinforced concrete wall, or is that just noting the secure area?
That's just denoting the secure area. The reinforced concrete is only required for the secure room, again, because that's where all the product is stored.
And you mentioned that it's also, the roof of the secure room is also concrete?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
So, even though this is actually, you know, obviously, we share a wall with people next door at this place, I guess, we have to be totally secure in that room.
Okay. And then, is it on slab? Like, so, does the concrete wall go down to slab? I'm just thinking of other ways people could break into the secure room. Out loud, I'm in public.
So, he's thinking, if I could just jump in, I mean, these are very detailed requirements that this application was done some time ago, that we could certainly, I could provide a written supplementation if you'd like to know specifically on the concrete, I'm sure I have it in here, but he probably wouldn't remember the specific constructive requirements of the state of Maryland that are very specific. If he would like, I'd be happy to supplement.
Yeah, that'd be great, just because I remember the last time we got into a fairly detailed discussion about the details, yeah, so...
Are you thinking about that for your grandkids, or?
No, 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 it's just, you know, I think that the concerns about the security of the inventory are relevant, and so, just making sure. And this is a different kind of building than the other building. This is a strip mall that's got, you know, high ceilings, and so, I was pleased to hear that it's going to have a concrete roof, because that was going to be one of my other questions, is that it's easy to go over partitions in those kinds of buildings, you know, because there's open ductwork and open spaces above the drop ceilings typically, so that would be an important thing. And then, the, on the doors, the access controls are what?
Still working that out with the contractor. We expect to use the hatch system, because again, everyone that goes through any door, that has to be logged and retained for some period of time.
Okay. And what is IDF, IDF closet?
Honestly, I don't know what IDF stands for, but it's our tech room. It's where the office will be...
Oh, information, data, facilities, probably, or something.
Yeah, so, where the telecoms stuff, your base and network connections and stuff.
Okay, and those external walls in the secure area, again, if any other details you can give about the perimeter of the secure area, what it's constructed of, that sort of thing?
Absolutely, I will supplement.
You know, the secure room and just the secure area generally. And I think that was, those were my only questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, the exit to grade in the back, those are the doors as well that you're referencing, it will be a key bag?
Oh, yes, yes.
For the exit to grade, the two doors that are out there. And just to follow up, just to remind me, for the secure, the secure room has to be a standalone, like that standalone room with no exterior walls?
No windows, well, no rear windows.
And no exterior windows and things like that. And so, there's no issue that that abuts up right next to an existing other business?
No, we confirm that with the commission, because that was one of our questions as well. As long as we're totally concrete inside, we're okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question I neglected to ask. Do you intend to sell other paraphernalia in the facility outside of the product itself?
Only what is related to the delivery of cannabis. I mean, we're not, we're not looking to do it in a head shop, but we want to offer some products that, you know, people might need.
Thank you.
Mr. President, as far as I know, this is a powerlifting strong engine before this, and the floors are slab.
Okay.
So, as long as the walls are going down to that, that should answer that question. The only question that I have is you mentioned security, the cameras, that there'll be an onsite and offsite. Does that happen in real-time, or is it uploaded at night?
That, still to be determined, I don't have any answer.
The reason I ask is if someone breaks in and there's a master, wherever it's being stored, and that's taken, and it's a nightly backup at 3:00 AM or something, which is a typical way to do it.
I'm pretty sure that, again, I have to refer back to dispatch, and I'm pretty sure we do have to upload them.
Yeah, I'm going to supplement on that issue as well, but I'm pretty positive there is a real-time requirement for dispensers, for the security.
Sorry, just one other question. Sorry. So, your exit to grade doors, again, and I know we sort of talked about, so you have two exit to grade doors, one from the secure area and one from the public waiting area? Are those doors match the same to get in from the outside?
They will. Those are both, they're like steel doors, so they're not, we're not planning to use it as a public entrance.
Okay, all right, and that, and so, the one for the secure area is really just for delivery of product in from the back? Is there parking back there?
I don't think so, I think it's just like an access road, the dumpster's back there.
Is there parking back there?
It's an alley. I mean, you could...
Does that alley terminate at the end of your building, because you're on that corner lot?
No, it actually goes all the way around.
Oh, so it goes, continues around behind Blue Bistro, down past, what, Everneris is in there, or something like that?
It goes beyond all, the entire alley, this building's shaped like an alley, so the entire...
Okay, so that alley goes the whole way back, the other, okay. Great, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions?
Free slogan. Fair with me, I have to earn my keep. Okay, so, we would submit that the petition for map amendment and zoting ordinance that they have applied for meets all requirements within the city of Westminster code. Although there have been some public comments from citizens, which we do appreciate, we don't think that there has been any evidence offered to support that this location is not an appropriate location where it is located. It is actually within the district, it's already been approved by the mayor and common council. It is actually safe in this location, it's not isolated, it's within an existing business use shopping center, it is surrounded by business-owned properties. It is safe off the Main Street thoroughfare, 140 Village Road, it's a very safe road, two-stop signs, there's a lot of activity there, which is actually a good thing. It's nondescript signage, this is actually for legalized, the people who are legally entitled to obtain it, so there's no requirement in the state of Maryland that's requiring that we put this in a medical office building or we put this here. We actually want it accessible to people, access. You don't want to create some perception that this is a bad thing, or that we should be scared of it. We should say this is super secure, this is part of it, and if you're only qualified is the way you get in. The land use characteristics, the footprints, we would analogize to a pharmacy, just like you have a Rite Aid in the middle of another shopping center, right? But you have a lot more to buy at a Rite Aid. People go in, they show a prescription, they get vetted, or you said you are, are you entitled to this prescription? You go through the process, you get your prescription, and you leave. The difference is, this is even more strict. You leave, you can't take the pill in the car, you need to go home and do it. I mean, this is very strict, that we would submit that it is not going to have a bigger, bigger footprint than a simple pharmacy, we would submit it actually is going to have less. The only legalized area for consumption, as we've talked about before, is anyone's residence. There is no evidence submitted, or that we've been aware of, that patients of the dispensary will cause any disturbance or having a dispensary in a shopping center will somehow cause a disturbance to the surrounding business community, or even the homes. This facility, we didn't bring out, but it is located beyond 1,000 feet from a school, which is one of the requirements in the state of Maryland. The security required by the state is very high, will protect any inventory and stuff on site, which is why the state of Maryland has been so conservative with their regulations. And I think it's important to note that the applicant will actually risk going to jail if they don't dispense this product in conformity with Maryland, Maryland law. That's a pretty big stick to keep people in check. So, we would actually submit this is a perfect location for it, it's on the other side, right, of the city, it's far away, it's perfect, easy accessibility to people, small enough community, well-lit, the security measures will increase, and the security room will prevent some of the, I guess, some of the fears that people are speaking of. For all these reasons, we would ask that when the time is appropriate, you do vote to approve the adoption of an ordinance applying the medical cannabis overlay district to 330 140 Village Road, Unit 7 and 8. We would submit on that. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to be leaving the public comments open.
So, we need a motion and approval for that, I believe?
Not yet.
But we will.
Well, I'll check with Melissa whether we introduce tonight or we put that on, so after the public hearing is closed. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item, oh, before we get to that, I'm sorry, I blew right past. We have a visitor here from the Boy Scouts, if you'd like to introduce yourself and your troop and why you're here.
I'm Dylan Merrick from mature 420, it's right by St. John's. And I'm here in order to get my citizenship in Maryland, because I'm an extremely good scout.
All right, congratulations on the impending Eagle Scout. You don't have, well, I guess you have to stay for the whole, you do whatever you want, you can come and go as you please. If it just gets painfully boring.
This is extremely interesting.
Okay, we're not offended if people come and go, so you don't have to stay for the whole thing, whatever you guys want. All right, so our next item is the consent calendar, we have five items on the consent calendar. I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Take a motion to approve the consent calendar, Mr. President?
I'll second that.
Motion to second. Any discussion or questions from staff about any of the items on the consent calendar? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Mayor, reports from the mayor.
All right, just a couple of things I'd like to talk about. So this week, we attended, some of us attended the retirement reception for Miss Sandy Ox of the Carroll Arts Council and Carroll Arts Center. She will be sorely, sorely missed. She received the key to the city, which is the first time I've given the key to the city to anyone, and as far as our records show, it finds the first time possible anyone's got the key to the city. And maybe, maybe a past mayor in the audience can correct me later if that's not the case, but it was exciting to give it to her. It was, she's going to be, she's done a lot for the city and the county. She still is doing a lot for the city, even though she's got one foot out the door, and I just think it was, it'd only be fair to mention her here today. The other thing was the beer and barbecue stroll, which was a great success. I think the numbers we last saw, yeah, I'll just check and just let me sure, were around 7,000 attendees, which I, you know, I was at the stroll last year and this year, and I had a good time last year. This year, it was many times better, in my opinion, it just keeps improving, I feel like all the strolls have. And it's a good service that we offer, not just for our city, but it brings people in from all over the place. I know I ran into probably 50 people that I knew that don't live in city limits, and that's a really good thing, because I know when we go, we always stay, and we patronize other businesses downtown afterwards, and it was a, it was a very, very good event. And that be it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item is reports from standing committees, Dr. Becker, can I get?
Just to follow up very quickly on the mayor's recognition of Sandy Ox. It was a really fantastic reception at the Arts Center, and she was very surprised and honored by everything that I think the city had presented her with. And nothing else to report?
All right, thank you, Dr. Becker. Councilman Kavachi.
Thanks, Mr. President. Two items from the Public Safety Committee, number one, I'd just like to compliment the chief and his staff. I'm sure everyone probably has already had an opportunity to read the Carroll County Times today, but the chief and his staff were the first police department in the entire state of Maryland to successfully complete the One Mind certification, which was no small fat, small feat. It required some effort to do that, obviously, it took effort because they're the only ones that have done it in the entire state so far. And I think most of us would agree, it's incredibly important that our police officers are well-trained and capable of dealing with people who are in mental.
Distress.
Yeah, mental distress, or having mental issues. I've seen it firsthand in the community where police officers have come and helped a young lady that was clearly in serious distress, and I was just blown away by the level of professionalism and obvious training that they had in dealing with this woman, and defused the situation and didn't turn it into what could have been a much worse situation. And I know that happens almost every day here in the city, or certainly numerous times a week. And this kind of certification and training, I think, speaks to the incredibly high level that our department is functioning at. You know, we are not a giant department like some of these other agencies that have the resources and money to put into things like this yet. Here we are, 44-man, 45-man department, and we're the first ones in the state to accomplish it. So, chief, I'm very proud of you and the staff, I hope you will pass it along. I think, I think it's a big deal and quite a great accomplishment, so please make sure you pass that on. Secondly, I'd like to comment, or actually discuss briefly, the Public Safety Advisory Council had commissioned a survey, I think most of you are aware, the survey is complete, the results are in a raw format in, and I think we were very successful in getting the results of the survey. Now, we are going to try to refine the information and boil it down to a presentation that the group can bring back to this body and make a presentation as to what those survey results set. And then I think it will be incumbent upon us to take that information and make our policy decisions based upon that, as needed. I don't think we're necessarily expecting something from this body, but certainly I think it's a valuable piece of information that we're going to be able to then utilize in the future. And a lot of work and time and effort went into it, so I'll have that. One other thing that I should light out is coming up, chief, that's?
It's August 7.
August, what, thank you.
7.
August 7, so we'll meet again before then, so we can bring it up, but it's always nice, I know I get out every year and go to it, I think you have as well in the past year, so it's good to get out in the community and let folks see us out there along with the senior staff members. And the chief will make arrangements for each of us to be hooked up with a senior member to go around with them to the different event locations, so maybe put that on your calendar, if you have an opportunity to get out there and do it. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Kavachi, Councilman Yingling.
Yeah, from the Public Works Committee, I'd like to report back on Mayor Dominic and Councilman Pecorero and I meeting at Maryland Municipal League. We had the opportunity to sit down with Secretary Grumbles again. This is obviously in relation to the need to find new water sources. He walked into the room and looked at both of us and said, "Team Water Reuse from Westminster, Maryland." That's a major, that's a major deal, in my opinion. Also, right after that meeting, I got another minute to speak to the governor, and he asked me about how we were doing with the water reuse, and I informed him that we had just met with Secretary Grumbles, and he informed me that if we needed anything, to please let his office know. So I believe we are in a very strong position to make some headway. I'd like to thank the delegation for, you know, understanding what's going on here and supporting us. Thanks to Mayor Dominic for being involved, Councilman, I mean Councilwoman Becker. I'm very positively optimistic, and I know that we have steps that we're taking to meet with the govern, I mean, I'm sorry, meet with Secretary Grumbles again and his legislative aide. So that's a big, it was worth going down there just for that, among a lot of other things. So that is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Yingling, if, that's awesome, and that will be a major achievement if we can get a water reuse project up and running to both be a demonstration for the rest of the state and the country, but also that is the path forward for increasing our capacity of our system. So congratulations, that sounds like a very successful meeting, set of meetings, so, good job. I have a couple items to share. First, I will, it was broken heart is probably too strong, but very disappointing not to have been able to go to the barbecue and beer stroll. We were at the beach, and the beach was fun, and I also missed Sandy's thing, which I wanted to be at, but. The other thing is next, on Saturday, July 7th, will be our first Pride Festival here in Westminster. Bertie's Cafe has been a major organizer of this, and it's going to be a big celebration of the diversity that this community has always had, and so I think it's very appropriate to publicly acknowledge that. So we're looking forward to that. And then, this past weekend, we had another Corbett's Charge celebration. This is probably now, what, 15 years? 15 years, geez. Corbett's Charge was, for those of you who aren't familiar, was a Civil War battle that occurred right here in Westminster, played a very important role in the Battle of Gettysburg. Jeb Stuart brought his cavalry up right by Maggie's, up Washington Road there, and at the intersection of Washington Road and East Main Street, they were met by a small troop of the 1st Delora Cavalry that was camped up at McDaniel College on the campus. And they came down Main Street, they had a battle there, and the 1st, the Union Cavalry was defeated pretty quickly, but it was enough of a delay that Jeb Stuart spent the night in Westminster, which added another day of delay for him to arrive at Gettysburg, which some, many historians believe was a pivotal factor in the Confederate defeat at Gettysburg.
And ultimately Confederate loss in the war.
And ultimately Confederate loss in the war. So, that happened this weekend, it was another successful commemoration. We have the encampment right here on City Hall grounds. And the Pipe Creek Civil War Roundtable is one of the organizations that is the key sponsor of this, and they, one of their members was a gentleman named Dr. Tom Legore, and he passed away last year. And Tom was, you know, we weren't super close, but I knew him well. He was one of the people that came to the city way back, you know, in 2003, to start this commemoration going, as well as Rebecca Ornstein, who was a former council member. And their combined efforts, we got this thing going, and it's been going great ever since. So Tom passed away, this is a picture of Tom at a prior event. And the Pipe Creek Civil War Roundtable has established a, let me get that up there, a scholarship in commemoration of Tom's role commemorating the Civil War. And there's a brief description here of the George Thomas Tom Legore Memorial Scholarship. Tom Legore's passion was the Civil War. He enjoyed many years of being a Civil War historian and reenactor. Tom was the author of the book Just South of Gettysburg, which can be regarded as an expert record of Carroll County's role within the Civil War. Tom was active with the Maryland Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area, Union Mills Homestead. The Pipe Creek Civil War Roundtable was a driving force in the creation of the annual Corbett's Charge Anniversary Commemoration Event. The scholarship is named in his memory because of his great contributions to preserving Civil War history within Carroll County, Maryland. So this is a scholarship that's held over at the Community Foundation, and high school students can apply each year. The requirement is that any high school student residing in Carroll County, they have to write a 2,000-word essay on a subject relating to Carroll County's Civil War history or the importance of preserving Civil War history, and then the student shall provide a copy of their high school transcript. And it's an annual thing, each year they will be offering multiple scholarships. So I just want to pass that along and recognize the Pipe Creek Civil War Roundtable, the Historical Society, and all the other groups that were, contributed to yet another successful Corbett's Charge commemoration. And then the last item is, today I became a happy gigabit fiber customer from the Westminster Fiber Network. The team folks were at my house today and installed my equipment. The drop went in last week while I was on vacation, and I gotta say, it's working. It's an amazing thing, the difference it makes, and, but the point of bringing this up is not that I'm a gigabit customer, although I'm very happy about that. The two installers, after they did their work and they did all their, the stuff that they're supposed to do, made a point to say to me, to thank the city for embarking on this project, because if we hadn't, they would have both been stuck in jobs they hated. And one of them worked in retail and the other worked in a lab, and both of them loved their jobs, and it was just a real poignant reminder to me that the whole point of doing this was economic development, and that these two guys now have jobs they love and have great career prospects as a result of the project. It was just a perfect anecdote of, an example of the success of that aspect of it. So, there you have it.
Jealous.
You'll get it, you'll get it, it's coming.
I'll get it in a bit of a week.
All right, any other council comments and discussions? Hearing none, we're on to bids, we have one bid approval, sewage sludge removal for the wastewater treatment plant, Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir. Recently, we issued a request for bids for sewage sludge removal from our wastewater treatment plant, and that, of course, takes place on an as-needed basis. We purposely did not dictate an ultimate disposal method, because we didn't want to exclude anybody, as far as that goes, for composting facilities or that kind of thing, to try to get as broad a reach as we could. But no matter what the ultimate disposal would be, there, you know, there'd be a transportation involved to an approved site. Most recently, they've all been in out-of-state landfills as well. We advertised the bids locally on the city's website and in Maryland E. Marketplace through April and May of 2018. Those specifications provided for a three-year contract term, we've done that for the, probably the last four or five contracts have always been for the three-year term. And the bid form was structured to provide for a cost per ton, and then we provided an estimated tonnage, and it's probably within 100 or so of our historical averages, for about 500, 5,500 tons per year. That way, we'd end up with an annual cost and something we could actually compare to in apples to apples. But the payments to the contractor will be on the cost per ton and then the actual tonnage, so it's, there's no estimate with that. We had modest interest from bidders and attendees at our pre-bid meeting, but by the due date, we only had one bid that was turned in that met that date and time, and that was submitted by Community Refuse Services LLC, who are subsidiary of Advanced Disposal Systems Services, I'm sorry, Incorporated. We reviewed that bid package internally and found it to meet our service needs, as far as that goes. Reflective of changes in the industry, the cost per ton for this bid is well in excess of our current contract amount. And if you go to page 181 of your packet, then you'll, the listing of the, and I'll go over that, but the actual bid form is there. For fiscal year 19, their bid was $102 per ton, and using the estimate of 5,500 tons, that's $561,000 a year. For 2020, their bid is $107.10 per ton, or $589,050 per year. And the last year, fiscal year 2021, at $112.46 a ton, or $618,530 per year. The issues with that are that, I mentioned that this is well in excess of our budgeted amount. We have, for this fiscal year, 2019, budgeted $400,000 for sewage sludge removal. Because of this significant increase in cost, a budget amendment will likely be necessary at a future date. So at this point, staff recommends authorization of the mayor's signature to award the sewage sludge removal contract to Community Refuse of Newburgh, Pennsylvania, in the amounts that I just described, and further explained in the bid form on page 181.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you, Mr. Glass, Mr. Mayor.
So, obviously, it's a big jump from what we expected, and we've done this before, so I would have guessed your estimate would have been pretty close to the cost before seeing this. What do you, what's your best idea as to what is driving the cost? You know, because I look at, there's only one person that bid. Do you think this is likely because we just didn't have enough people bid? Or is this simply something in the industry that's driving this cost that we can't control?
So landfill costs are continuing to go up, they just don't go down. And part of the reason that I think this cost was higher is the parent company is owner of the landfill, and where our sludge is going now, it's a contractor, basically, that was hauling it to that landfill. With the need for a performance bond, we had to go with someone who obviously. With the, the need for a performance bond, we had to go with someone who obviously could provide that performance bond, and this company could do that, where we had issues with that, with the, the current company.
Mr. President.
Are you done, Mr. Mayor?
I'm done.
Josh, first. Thank you, Mr. President. So, to come back to the price, and you said you left the bidding open broad, right? You didn't want to, you know?
Purposely.
Purposely. Are there, to your knowledge, are there price differences between companies that, so landfill prices are going up, right? So is there, are there price differences between companies that, that say you do take it to landfill versus something like Syngro or some other organization that might turn it into biosolids?
So, in the instance of Syngro, that, our sludge is dewatered, but it's not pelletized. It's not in a form that, because Syngro does that work as well. They ship a lot of their material to, to Florida, and they put it on orange groves for the fertilizer value. Our sludge is not in that state yet. It would need further treatment in order for that to happen. Our sludge could be land, or not landfill, it could be landfill as well, but it could be wind-veered and compost. That would be another further treatment step, but it would be in a, in a consistency where you could do that with it as well.
So the sludge that we're producing right now, the sewage treatment, is not any kind that a biosolid facility would be interested in?
It needs further treatment in order to be able to market it, and that's where the cost then increases.
So we would have to absorb that cost?
That's correct.
Right.
So just to take it one step further, when we do our E and R process, we will be pelletizing and de-watering, de-watering and drying and pelletizing our own sludge at that point. And it will go to be used as a fuel source then, so we will.
Because I, Lehigh currently.
That's correct.
Has some other biosolids from Syngro, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, Mr. President.
Mr. Karachi. So that actually answered one of my questions, was about pelletizing and figuring out how we can make it more marketable. It's a three-year contract. We're going to be hemmed into this for three years, correct?
So, the answer there is yes and no. Here's why. If we can come up with something in the interim that would be more economic, economically feasible for us, this is on an as-needed basis. So when I call them, they show. If I don't need them.
Okay. So then that, that's, that's, that's good, because.
We did that purposely, too.
Obviously, it's 161,000 extra dollars on top of what we've already assumed it was going to be, and that's only year one. Year two and three out, you have, were we still, Mr. Palmer's not even here. Do you know ballpark-wise what we were projecting out for that in the waterfront, or I guess it was the sewer fund?
Yeah.
About the same?
Yes, sir.
About 400,000?
That's correct.
So we're, then we're well, we're pushing 600K, maybe seven, actually probably 700,000 in just the gap between what we are building into our rate scale model, correct? Versus what this is going to cost us. We're talking about a significant amount of money.
That's correct.
That's going to have an impact on our rates, over and above probably what we're already talking about. Is that accurate?
It could be. That's, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's a problem. That's bad. We are contemplating or going to, as part of the, our project, begin pelletizing the solids.
That's correct.
What's keeping us from doing that soon?
The construction schedule. You know, you have to start at A before you can go to B.
So it's not a piece of equipment that you purchase that does that function? It's a facility, not just a machine?
Building, that's correct. And while it's early in the construction schedule, we still have to construct it.
Do you have a sense of what the percentage of the cost that we're talking about is for the landfill fees versus the hauling and getting it to where it needs to go picking it up and dumping and all that stuff?
So that's another angle that we could use. We have, we have.
Do you know where we're dumping?
We do have a dump truck of our own that would meet these, the specifications that the state.
Well, hell, for three-quarters of a million dollars, we could buy a pretty big truck.
Yes.
Still.
So, the, right now, we're paying $65 a ton. And the lowest bid, obviously, was 102. Their landfill costs, if we take it to the Chambers, that's the other problem, is it's the same owner that owns the landfill that we would be hauling to, so.
And they're the only landfill with their reasonable distance that'll take it?
Closest landfill, yes. So that's kind of the, that's the, the problem for us there. Northern landfill is not interested in taking as much sludge as we would provide to them. That's an issue for them as well. So, you know, we, we would probably in the, because right now landfill's cost, even at Northern, is, we pay $65 a ton there for anything that we take to the landfill. So we're probably going to be along that line hauling it to Chambersburg then, if we haul it ourselves. So, you know, we might be able to save 30 bucks a ton, maybe.
Have you looked back to see what the potential cost might be of, granted, it's going to take manpower to do it and footy and fuel and wear and tear and all that?
Yes, sir. So we're in the process of that right now to try to get an idea. Part of that also is that, right now, our, our materials moved in by tractor-trailer. And the truck that we have, there's going to be a lag time in the, in the logistics of moving it that distance and having the truck back again, because it's a, not 24-hour process, but it's, we move a lot of material.
Understood, but again, I think, you know, this is a million and a half dollars worth of total cost. If you are telling me that a little over half of that is the actual dumping fee, that's 700, 800,000 dollars of push there. Not that I'm trying to take, look, I'm all pro-privatizing and not doing things in, you know, that we can send to public.
Correct.
Businesses, but this is way more money than we were anticipating.
That's correct.
And I, I think we should at least look at that and, and see, I mean, even hiring, hiring a guy, buying a truck and running that stuff up there, probably still going to be significantly less expensive than what we're potentially talking about here. I, I think. But I could be way off.
No, I don't think you are, and that's, and again, that's why we're checking into it right now. So I think the saving grace in the contract is on an as-needed basis, so.
Is the, pardon?
Yeah, just real quick. What happened to integrated, is that who we use now, Integrated Agro?
That's correct.
Where, what happened to them? You said there's a surety issue?
For a performance bond requirement, that they had to work through this company, actually. They will still be our hauler, but they're working as a sub to this company.
So that's why they're personally?
That's correct.
Is the, the trade-off between the next furthest away, and the next furthest away, because I, landfill fees in Southern Virginia, for example, or in West Virginia, as I understand it, lower, but it's farther. And so there's also a break-even analysis there on transportation costs and.
So right now, our sludge is going to the King George Facility just below, in Virginia there, just below Kings Dominion.
Yep.
That's where it's going right now.
At 65. And that's including transportation? Oh, my. Okay. Hmm. The light at the end of the tunnel is we will be pelletizing.
That's correct.
In the relatively near future, and then hopefully that's going to be a game changer for us.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? So we have the citizens' comments at the end.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, I have a question for, for this, if anyone's talking.
Yeah, you can, at the end, you can just, you can bring it up then, you can.
And we're not too far.
No doubt.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Glass. There's no more questions? Let's see, did we do the motion in a second, all of them?
Well, I guess here's the thing that I would say about making a motion. You doesn't have to call them unless we are in an absolute dire situation, but we can't just let this stuff sit.
That's correct. We will be calling them until we figure out something different. We absolutely will be calling them.
I don't think we're going to have a choice. I mean, this stuff can't build up.
That's correct.
Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So there's, there's nothing in the agreement that says that, for this particular service, even though it's as-is, that they're exclusive?
No, sir.
Okay, just wanted to.
But did we do a motion?
And we can terminate?
No, we haven't. So I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mr. President.
But we don't have to terminate, we just don't call.
That's right.
I'll, I'll make a motion to go ahead and accept the bid from, I lost my page, I apologize.
Did you say for sewage sludge removal?
The bid from this company on sludge hauling, I can't find.
Motion?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions, amendments, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're on to ordinances and resolutions. We have, oh, one quick procedural question, Ms. Levant. Since we're leaving the public hearing open, we defer the introduction, or can we introduce while, while the record's open still?
It wasn't, it wasn't introduced last time. No. I'm sorry, I'm hollering. No, you should introduce.
Do introduce.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So our first is adoption of Resolution 18-06 of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster, adopting a downtown parking area map in accordance with the provisions of Section 164-111 of the City Code. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item before you is sort of the second act to something done some time ago. Our city code contains provisions that allow the granting of a reduction of about 25% for all construction uses commenced in the downtown parking area after July 1, 2004. Specifically, was created to allow some flexibilities and reduction in the standard parking requirements applied anywhere, highway, commercial, such as for our downtown area. That was specifically by code linked to the downtown parking area map that was to be adopted by resolution by the Mayor and Council. My search of the records, as well as city clerks, to find that document, I don't think it was actually adopted. So this evening, we are proposing a downtown parking area map that is comprised of all the commercial districts along Main Street from sort of the Triangle Pennsylvania Avenue down to Manchester Avenue and the Cross Street being Route 27. So if you look on the map, it's sort of a great big sea of, of gold, which is all residential, and in the middle, there's Main Street, and it's, it's multiple colors that are all the commercial districts. So essentially, the map would highlight all the existing commercial districts, not include single-family districts, and would allow this provision of the code to be utilized. I think as we discussed during the budget, the, one of the city's goals is to look at parking, a number of different parking systems, and to try to provide relief, the flexibility, and this is offered this time in order to offer businesses some relief while we fly into the process of looking at the 10 or so various ways that we regularly park in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Mackey?
I have a vaguely related question.
Doctor Becker.
That may or may not be valid for this, but anyway, thank you for this map, because it is interesting. How does the city decide where to place its parking meters? Are they within the downtown parking area?
That is a good question, and I don't actually know the answer. Although if meters were placed when I came, there are a variety of maps that indicate locations of meters, and I could certainly take a look at that and get back on that. Just from a deep dive on this, I, I do believe it's properties that the city either owns or leases for the purpose of parking. I do believe they're all roughly within close distance of Main Street and the parking lot, but that's not a comprehensive answer, that's just an anecdote.
Okay. I was just curious, because when I saw the map, recognizing the streets, some of the streets obviously have meter parking, but other streets that are included in this area do not have meter parking. And so I was wondering if that was some sort of differentiation for being included in this map or not, so.
The existence of meters does not.
Kurt Long, before I came to the city, I, Mr. Glass is probably the one on my arm with this. Regulations were adopted, I might ask him. I'm sorry, I wasn't.
The history of parking meters in City of Westminster, chapter one.
How do you decide where parking meters go?
Chapter one. Gosh, as long as I remember, it was always on, on Main Street. I, that was, they were there before, and I've been here since dirt, so.
There's so other streets besides Main. We've got them on court.
There's a couple on Anchor, too, and, and they're seen a little out of.
Odd.
Odd, there.
Oddly placed.
Yeah, so. I, I'm just curious. I didn't know, you know, with the creation of this map, whether or not this map had some variable where parking meters may or may not go, or.
And I actually like, I think that is a good idea, that the, the map was just to address businesses that would have needs, so it's only reflected business. And that, this map may well be adjusted after time, to reflect that sort of relationship to where meters are, because of the relation to the study.
I'm just curious. All right, thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Mackey?
Make a motion to adopt 1806, Mr. President.
Second, Beth.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is adoption of ordinance number 894, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property located on the High Acre Drive for a public person, purpose in authorizing the mayor to accept a deed for said property. Ms. Matthews.
Thank you. Last fall, the city was approached by Shelter Senior Living about possibly donating a parcel of property to us. The parcel in question is about 1.4 acres in size, and it joins Brightview Westminster Ridge, which is a senior living community. Staff evaluated the property and felt that it would be appropriate for future development as a park. As was probably discussed at the last meeting, if acceptance of this donation is authorized by the mayor and council, the property would be conveyed by a no-consideration quitclaim deed, which would include a restrictive covenant. In essence, that restrictive covenant would require that the property be used by the city for parkland recreational facilities or other community purpose as set forth in the city zoning ordinance. So before you this evening is consideration of the adoption of ordinance number 894, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Any questions from council, Ms. Matthews? Doctor Becker.
Okay. Thank you, and I'm not, not opposed to the acquisition of this property, but the land that they're donating, their driveway goes through that?
It's adjacent to it.
Oh, is it adjacent to it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It does not go through the property.
It's not underneath that yellow star on the map?
It looks like it on the map, it looks like it goes through.
I don't believe so, no.
Oh, okay, all right. That's, that's fine, thank you.
Now, I drove over there and looked at it, and it seemed like it's off to the, if you're looking at the facility, the right.
Okay.
Of their driveway, I think.
I think that's right. I think the line is probably just a little.
The line is just a little.
Generous.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Councilman Karachi.
Ms. Matthews, are there any costs to the city in acquiring this property? If so, what are they? And then what would the cost be for us to maintain that property? I assume we have to mow the grass.
That's correct. There is no cost to the city in terms of actually accepting the donation. We need to provide a property donation letter, similar to what happened with Wakefield. The only initial cost to the city would be maintaining the property, mowing. We did attempt to work out an arrangement to see if the Brightview folks would be kind enough to mow the property, and I was unsuccessful in that effort.
So that's part of the reason we've rid of it?
Yes. So, yeah, there would be some initial mowing cost. Talking to Ms. Gruber, our hope would be to secure grant funding in the future to actually develop kind of a trail system through the property or some other use that we would bring before the mayor and council in the future.
Wait, how many acres is it?
It's 1.4.
So that's a relatively quick model with even a medium-sized piece of equipment. Thank you.
Any further questions from Ms. Matthews? I'm going to make a motion.
To make a motion to adopt ordinance number 894?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Last item is introduction of ordinance number 895, an ordinance regarding local zoning map amendment number LMA 18-01, approving an application for the establishment of a medical canvas overlay district upon certain property located in the city's B business owner, adopting the accompanying written decision. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I am related to the record, the item of the public hearing was held for this evening. Staff recommends introduction. It's going to be introduced in the next step of the, your next meeting, when you also conclude the public hearing. This ordinance will appear for second reading, and at that time, a decision that reflects And at that time, a decision that reflects what has transpired would be a cash flow ordinance, because as your public hearing remains open, it would be a draft or perhaps a tentative decision, and then the public hearing would be closed, and perhaps we would deal with what we find it.
Yeah, and you just need a motion to continue the hearing after July 8.
Before or after we introduce?
After you choose.
Okay. All right.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 895, is that correct? I just posted my packet on the stage.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until our next council meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have no unfinished business. We have one item of new business. A vote to go into executive session. Dr. Becker?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to under Maryland Code, annotated General Convisions Article 3-305P, to move into executive session to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters strictly related thereto, to consult, sorry, to consider the marketing of public securities and
Councilor Don Juan, the acquisition of property.
The, oh, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters strictly related thereto, to consult with legal counsel, to obtain legal advice on a legal matter.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. No motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're on to departmental reports. Ms. Matthews.
She's following.
Well, I will defer, as councilperson Cavacci has already covered my points for the evening, but thank you.
Sorry.
Quite all right, sir.
Hi, Ms. Valancisi.
Good evening. So we're, I guess, relatively busy with the housing services. We have our rental housing license renewal applications and letters going out this Friday. We're mailing them out and hoping to get the majority of the rental properties paying their applications in the month of July and being able to issue the licenses. And
Excuse me, Ms. Matthews, Valancisi, can we do that just at one time a year?
Yes.
Or is that, that's not spread out throughout the course of the year, it's done all at once?
So we send the renewals out once a year, and then if someone new were to purchase a property
During the course of the year. Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. And other, we're busy, Mr. Singer, Roy Singer, the code enforcement officer, he's very busy.
I'm sure.
Grass is growing, and the weeds are high, and so he's relatively busy with that. And housing's moving along in a same direction. That's about it.
Mr. Glass.
Just a few things. The annual paving contract is complete as of last Friday. It kind of turned into a nail biter with all the rain that we've had that kind of delayed us. This project had to be done before the end of the fiscal year, and pleased to say that we were able to complete that. So talking about that, the fiscal year '19 contract is out the bid as we speak, so no sooner will we end the last one, we'll start the next one very shortly then, hopefully. The little pipe relocating and lining project has been the pre-application for that has been submitted by our design engineer to the Army Corps of Engineers for their review, and probably within the next three or four months, we'll we'll have some kind of feedback back from the Army Corps about that project and the potential permitting for it. The last thing is fiber phases three and four were well underway. I don't know, maybe you noticed the control structure that's been installed down here that will handle everything on this side of 27, basically, for the rest of town. And it's gone quite well. We're following the plan to light those sections as they are built. As Dr. Wack is, now has services, so we had a few bottlenecks that we had to work through, but we're working through them, and there is a light at the end of the tunnel to get through those as well. So that's all I had, unless there are questions.
Where are we at, Medford Quarry?
So we had met with, the county and I, met with MDE almost a month ago, I guess, at this point, and well, it was a very successful meeting. The math behind, and science behind that meeting was that there is some water available there. Since that time, there have been some email chain back and forth, where MDE is now taking that under an independent review to, I guess, confirm those numbers. And that's pretty much where we stand right now. They asked for a little bit additional information. I think in a more formal note, because it had already been provided to them at the initial meeting, but I think probably we'll hear something back in the next two or three weeks from the conclusion of that. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you. Just want to report out on some of the meetings and things that are occurring. On Monday, May 21st, your Main Street manager, Sandy Anderson, facilitated our regular downtown partners meeting at John Street Quarters. The city has worked very hard to sort of reposition these meetings as meetings among merchants, with merchants, so there were three guest speakers. One from the Enterprise Store, John Holly Wheatman, talked about City's ambassador initiative, which is something that is in our budget, you all adopted for FY '18. It's for economic development and to encourage people to become ambassadors for the town. And we're being called partners for City Westminster. Also, Tiampe Page and Cultivated discussed social media and retail store planning. Terry Will See and Val from Ting, which is also local here in downtown, talked about Crazy Fast Fire Service coming to downtown. The next meeting, we're downtown partners, is July 16th. It's Monday, 8 o'clock, because we're freshmen, so maybe 30 a.m. And we expect to hear Bernie Bogle talk about his partnership with McDaniel and sort of how to successfully do that, and that will be held at the Carroll Arts Center. Your Planning and Zoning Commission on June 14th approved the Canora Parking Lot Expansion. I know there was, it's a den as part of that, so that has been approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. Some new canopy, so there are Chick-fil-A on Maryland 140, and also proposed plaque for Stonegate Section 2, 421, more homes. That will be proceeding for the next several years. Your Board of Zoning Appeals in July will be looking at a review. It's actually an appeal from administrative decision. So not everything goes well with my administrative decisions they're appealing. And also, we're taking a look at a change in existing non-conforming use. It's a small local business that would like to expand on Main Street, and in order to do that, they have to have their non-conforming use examined. So we're just working with them on that to help up their throat. And I think that is it for the season.
Thank you. Just a few items. I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly express my appreciation to Ms. Levann. As you know, we finally closed on the 45 West Main property last Monday. It has certainly been an, sometimes a torturous adventure, but Lissa was my partner throughout that, and it was nice to finally get that done. I know some of you have mentioned, Councilmember Becker being among them, that you might have some interest in a tour of the interior of the building. I'll be reaching out to you all probably tomorrow to see who might want to participate in that. And she's not here, Ms. Palmer and Ms. Gruber are both on vacation, but as you know, we had a last-minute dispute about items that had been left in the building, and Ms. Palmer really did a fantastic job of trying to identify a low-cost alternative to get those belongings removed. That process got underway on Monday as we were getting ready to for the mayor to sign the settlement documents, and they finished up on Wednesday, which, if you'd ever seen how much stuff was in that building, it was quite an accomplishment. Our architect is continuing to work on the conceptual design. I am hoping to have something for you all fairly soon that we can share with you so you can see, at least as a staff, what we envision in terms of the space layout. So stay tuned for that. Following up on Councilmember Yingling's comments, as you know, we hired a lobbyist to help us sort of advance water reuse with the state. They had a conversation with Secretary Grumbles, a point person on this issue. His name is Jeff Fretwell. They had a conversation last Wednesday, which they recorded, went very well. And they are working with Mr. Fretwell to schedule a time in July for representatives of the city to meet with Secretary Grumbles to actually get into a little bit more detailed discussion about what reuse options that we have under consideration. So I will keep you posted on that as that advances. So I think that concludes everyone's report, unless you have any questions.
Mr. President. I'd like to echo your appreciation to Ms. Levann for the work you did with PNC on that negotiation. You did a great job, but I'd also compliment you as well, Ms. Matthews. That was, you know, we were all very involved with that with you, and I know I was somewhat difficult at times
I would never say that, Councilmember Cavacci.
on how little we wanted to pay for that building. So I wanted to compliment you on a job very well done. I think that that is an acquisition that will benefit the city for a long time to come. And frankly, had we not made that acquisition, I think it would have been a blight for a long time to come on downtown, so great job. And, you know, very glad we were able to give a conclusion. Good work.
All right, thank you.
A second. All right, no further departmental reports. We're on to citizen comments. If you have a comment about anything we've been discussing, anything else, please raise your hand and identify yourself for the recording secretary. Yes, ma'am.
Do I have to stand up? Oh, sorry.
Wait, you gotta tell your name and address again.
Yeah, Rockwood Drive, 347 Fair Avenue. On the matter of the sludge, I don't think I have anything to add because my questions were before making the decision on the approval of the bid and suggestions, but I do believe that that is taken care of, so
Well, but still
I don't have anything else.
What was your input?
Well, I, you mentioned, Mr. Glass, you mentioned that there was prospective dealings that could have happened, but because of the time and the deadline, only one submitted. I was wondering if there was a way that it could be extended to submit more, to let other people, other contractors submit more, because one contractor could be one, so there's no competition, so they can raise the numbers and the amounts of the prices however they want.
So just to be clear, there was an ample amount of time for whoever to bid, whatever they wanted to bid, but only one contractor bid at all. So that's when I said by the due date and time, we have to have a cutoff someplace, but, you know, this process started back in April, so if we were going to have additional contractors, additional bidders,
They should have.
they had ample time to do that, so maybe I was not clear in my
And I do apologize.
No, no. Good question.
Because I were, that is, my knowledge, so, you know, I wanted to have them there.
No, we always
On the matter of the donation, the land donated, my suggestion will be approach Boy Scouts. That could be a service, project service for the Boy Scouts to help maintain and beautify the city, which Shu420 and others in Carroll County, if you make the Boy Scouts, they might be able to help you to go on the land and cut the grass and have it for free.
Sure. And that's actually, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that was something else that I had intended to discuss at some point, and it had slipped my mind, but during my vacation, I did quite a bit of reading, and one of the things, it was about municipalities and developing vibrant communities and economic development. And one of the things that was mentioned in this book is about community building, and that communities that thrive for a variety of reasons, one of the things they have in common is active efforts around community building, where people in the community make an investment in their time and effort, you know, and they, and they demonstrate that they care about the community. And so that's a perfect example of something like that. And it was going to be something I was going to talk about at some point, about we've got to figure out a way to get more people working with the police, working with Parks and Rec, working with Public Works, cleaning up, beautification things, like the thing we do with the McDaniel students, you know? Anyway. All right, any other citizen comments? All right, we are adjourned until the executive session.